Gentlemen. Welcome to the County Council meeting, taking place on Wednesday the 23rd of October 2024. This meeting is being broadcast live to our YouTube channel. Before we commence with today's formal business, and I ask everyone in the chamber to switch off or make silent their mobile phones and all other electronic devices, please. Before we move to the business on the agenda, I would like to remind you all of the housekeeping rules for the meeting. Once invited to speak, please stand up and face forward and switch on the closest microphone to you. If you need to adjust the position of the microphones, please do so. But if you can do this whilst the microphone is switched off. As per usual, if you encounter any problems with your voting handset, please raise your handset in the air and a member of committee services will assist. I would like to extend a warm welcome to the members of the public attending the meeting. You are very welcome to attend and observe proceedings. However, I request politely that you do not disrupt the meeting. We move on to item one, the minutes. Can I have a mover, a man? councillor Hopgood?
Chair, I'd like to move the minutes.
Second the minutes, Chair.
Thank you. Are the minutes agreed? Thank you. We move on to item two, declarations of interest. Does any member wish to declare an interest in relation to any item of business on the agenda? We move on to item three. Members, as always, can I remind everyone that we are respectful to each other during the meeting. Robust debate is part of the democratic process, but I would ask members to respect the views of others and not to point fingers during debate. I would also remind members that it is not appropriate to shout at other councillors across the floor during debate. Please use the microphones when speaking. Where points of order are raised, once a ruling has been made on advice of the deputy monitoring officer, it will not be revisited. For my final announcement, I would like us to offer our congratulations to the Vice-Chair of the Council, Patricia Jobbling. Patricia was recognised in the King's Birthday Honour earlier this year and was recently presented with her medal by the Lord Lieutenant of Durham County, Durham, at a very special investiture with her family. The British Empire Medal recognises commitment, dedication and hard work over a considerable period for her service to Crook and the wider community in County Durham. Congratulations to Patricia. We move on to item four, the leaders' report. Can I invite the leader of the council to present her report, please?
Thank you, Chair, and good morning, everyone. Autumn has arrived and with the clocks going back this weekend, the nights will soon be drawing in. Autumn and winter can be a challenging time for many people, and that's why we've teamed up with Point North to deliver our Welcome Spaces scheme for the third year. The project aims to create a network of places across the county where people can feel safe, warm and included. Last year, eighty-three organisations joined the network and the feedback we received showed that there were other benefits as well as keeping people warm. Welcome Spaces provided a place for people to socialise, along with support on matters ranging from finance, housing and mental health to drugs and alcohol. We hope even more community organisations will become Welcome Spaces this winter and are offering grants of up to £3,000 in training to support them to do so. Please would everyone take the time to spread that throughout their communities. There's also advice on how to stay warm and well in the current issue of Durham County News. The magazine is available to read online or to pick up within our libraries and leisure centres. Residents can also subscribe to receive free email alerts each time an edition is published. It's a great way to stay up to date with the latest council news, events. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, one minute. Do any members have any questions on the report? Can I ask the council to note the report? We move on to item five, questions from the public. Two questions have been received for today's meeting. I will hand over to the Deputy Monitoring Officer who will explain the procedure.
Thank you, Chair, and good morning, members. As the Chair said, two questions have been received for today's meeting. Each member of the public will ask their question and receive an answer from a member of the Cabinet. There are no provisions for any debate on the questions or for any supplementary questions to be asked. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. The first question comes from Mr Tuff. The question is being displayed on the screen. Can I invite Mr Tuff to ask his question?
Thank you, Chair. On the 9th of the 10th, 24, the members, our town councils and the public were presented with a document which shows that the council has the power to apply Article Four directions to limit any potential proliferation. The document also provided robust evidence as to why the council should apply Article Four directions across East Durham, for example, to prevent any further increases in crime in East Durham. Will the council apply immediate Article Four directions? And if not, specifically in detail, why not? Thank you, Chair.
Can I invite councillor James Rollinson, Cabinet portfolio holder for resources, investment and assets, to respond, please?
Thank you, Chair. Can I first thank Mr Tuff for his question? We recognise the role that HMOs can play in providing accommodation and the council also acknowledges that some communities are expressing concerns about the introduction of HMOs in some areas. We are aware that an Article Four direction in specific circumstances can be made to extend the need for planning permission to smaller HMOs. It is important to note, however, that under national guidance, the test to implement an Article Four direction would require a level of impact that is not currently evidenced for the area proposed. It should also be noted that an Article Four direction would apply to a specific area. Council should also note the need for planning permission does not mean that the HMOs will not be supported. They will simply be subject to planning approval. Members of this council will also be aware that we are under pressure to meet housing needs of all our residents, which may be exacerbated by the recent proposals from government to deliver on higher housing targets going forward. However, as a proactive step, the following concern was raised by some residents in relation to HMOs. The council has submitted comments in response to the recent consultation on changes to the National Planning Policy Framework and have written separately to Angela Rayner MP, Secretary of State for Housing in Communities and local government regarding the process for Article Four directions being granted. HMOs are also subject to licence requirements, which remain the key mechanism that local authorities have to ensure that HMOs operate appropriately. If members of the public have any specific concerns regarding any issues, they should be reported through the council for further investigation. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. The second question has been submitted by Mr Williamson. Mr Williamson is unable to attend the meeting today, however, he has asked that I put his question to the council. The question is being displayed on the screen and reads as follows. My question relates to Freeman's Key and is asked on behalf of some of my fellow concession members using this facility. Can we ask the council how they can justify raising the membership fees for concession members, in some cases over £100, when nearly half of the equipment is not in full working order? For example, the pool floor has been unable to be used correctly since 2022 and the steam room has been unable to be used for the past six months. These are just two of several issues at Freeman's Key. Can I invite councillor James Rollinson, Cabinet portfolio holder for resources, investment and assets, to respond, please?
Thank you, Chair. Can I also thank Mr Williamson for his question? Freeman's Key is an extremely popular centre with just over 3,000 members. Naturally, this leads to inevitable wear and tear, especially in high traffic areas across the facility. Officers across the council and the facility staff do everything possible to prevent maintenance issues arising, and when they do happen, to rectify them as quickly as possible. The pool has been set at a fixed depth since December 2022, as there has been an issue with the mechanics on the floating floor. This allowed the pool to remain open to the public and ensured that swimming activities were not affected. The sauna has been subject to considerable investment in repairs over the last six months, including the installation of a new generator. However, there has been new issues identified which have delayed plans to reopen it to the public. Our gym equipment is serviced annually, it is checked daily by staff and a contractor is employed to undertake responsive repairs. Although there may be occasional times when an individual piece of equipment is out of use, this would not result in a disruption in the gym experience. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. That concludes this item. Thank you to those people taking the time to submit a question. The questions and responses from today's meeting will be posted on the council's website following the meeting. We move on to item six, petitions. There are no petitions for today's meeting. Item seven, the report from Cabinet. Can I ask the leader of the council to present the report?
Thank you, Chair. Present the report as tabled in the minutes.
Thank you. One question has been received in relation to item seven on the Cabinet report. The question is being displayed on the screen. Councillor Wood, can I invite you to ask your question, please?
Thank you, Chair. What feedback from residents, elected members and AOPs was considered in the eight months since full council voted unanimously for free after two parking to be reintroduced in County Durham for towns such as Chesley Street?
Councillor Hopgood?
Thank you. Thank you, Councillor Wood. For the question, I'm going to refer to the relevant Cabinet portfolio holder to respond. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. At County Council on the 14th of January this year, Cabinet accepted a motion which was approved after a vote to reconsider the decision to end free after two parking. Full council did not vote unanimously for free after two parking to be reintroduced. Following the removal of free after two in off-street car parks on the 1st of January 2024, Parking Services received nine complaints via direct email, an MP, the CRM system and corporate complaints. Residents may have contacted councillors about removal of the initiative, however, no cases have been logged via Member Services. The impact of the temporary free after two initiative and its removal have now been assessed in light of: the original decision to implement the temporary measure as a stimulus to support the economic recovery from the global pandemic; government's removal of all Covid restrictions; the lack of evidence linking changes in car parking charges to changes in town centre footfall; the costs of delivering a parking regime and the Secretary of State's expectation that neither national or local taxpayers should meet any deficit in the parking account; our declared climate emergency and the fact that transport emissions account for 33% of all emissions in County Durham; the need to balance the economic vitality of commercial centres and the environmental impact in providing a scheme that incentivises people to drive; the fact that park and ride usage increased when free after two on-street was removed. From the data available, car park usage in 2425 is expected to exceed pre-pandemic levels. A report was taken to Cabinet on the 18th of September 2024, where Cabinet concluded that the decision to remove the initiative is the correct decision when reviewed against the available evidence. Might I respectfully suggest, Chair, that if members of the opposition were to attend Cabinet or even read the papers, they would know this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Wood?
Thanks, Chair. I believe I'm allowed to ask a supplementary question following the answer. So I'm just gonna do that as briefly as possible. Obviously, I don't get much chance to read the Cabinet papers before the deadline for submitting the questions, so I'm sorry if councillor Scott felt the question was submitted too quickly. I also don't get much time to frame a supplementary either. What I will say is, the focus of my question was what consultation was undertaken. I think we've heard here that no consultation's been undertaken in the last eight months. I did read the Cabinet papers and no consultation was considered by Cabinet before that decision was taken in September. So really, my supplementary question is, why does the Cabinet member think that Durham City Cabinet members know more about what's best for Chesley Street than residents, elected members or the AOPs do?
Yeah, I mean, I think the fact that there were nine representations in objection answers the question about consultation. And I'd be happy to share, if Labour members would like me to, the videos of them speaking against parking charge, free parking, sorry, when it was first mooted in this council chamber and I was here and part of the debate. So thank you.
Thank you. Can I ask the council to note the report? Item eight, report of the Audit Committee for the period September 2023 to August 2024. Can I invite the Chair of the Audit Committee, councillor Alex Watson, to present his report?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. It is considered good practice for the Audit Committee to report its work to full council on an annual basis. As Chair of the council's Audit Committee, I am pleased to present this report today. The report covers the work of the Audit Committee during the period September 2023 to August 2024 and sets out how the Audit Committee has fulfilled its role in gaining assurances as to the adequacy and effectiveness of the council's governance, risk management framework and internal control environment. The report sets out details of the various meetings that have been held over the last 12 months and the issues that have been considered at those meetings. There are three key areas of the committee's work during the last 12 months that I would like to draw your attention to. The first relates to the work of the internal audit. The Audit Committee continues to promote and champion the work of internal audit across the organisation. The committee agreed the internal audit strategy, charter and internal audit plan for the year and updates are provided to the committee on a quarterly basis. I am satisfied that the committee provides the appropriate challenge to this process with a number of officers attending the committee to provide explanations and answer questions across the year through the delivery of presentations. Secondly, the external audit of the council's statement of accounts. In November 2023, the committee received a report from the Corporate Director of Resources, which presented the final statement of accounts for the year ending 31st of March 2023 for review and approval alongside the external auditor's report following the conclusion of the 2022/23 audit. The statutory requirement was for the council to finalise the accounts by the 30th of September 2023, but as that was not possible, as Mazars were unable to complete their audit review in time, with arrangements made for a public notice to be added onto the council's website to this effect. The Audit Committee were satisfied that there was nothing the council or its officers could have done to achieve the 30th of September deadline last year. The delay was wholly down to external audit capacity. In June 2024 this year, the committee considered the draft unaudited statement of accounts for the year ending 31st of March 2024, and the draft accounts were certified and provided to external audits within the statutory deadline. A verbal progress update report on the draft statement of accounts for the year ending 31st of March 2024 was presented to Audit Committee in September 2024, and the final statement of accounts will be presented to the meeting of the Audit Committee in November 2024 for review and approval. Thirdly, I would draw members' attention to the continuing good work of the council's corporate fraud team. The protecting of the public purse reports we have considered demonstrate across the council the counter fraud activity that has been completed in order to acknowledge, prevent and pursue fraud under the council's counter fraud and corruption strategy. We have acknowledged fraud as a strategic risk and the prevention is indeed better than cure. The council has an excellent local and national profile for its work in this area, and the corporate fraud team has developed strong partnerships with other public sector organisations, which continue to enhance the reputation that the council has. Finally, the report also contains information on the outcome of the self-assessment evaluation of the effectiveness of the Audit Committee carried out in February 2024 in accord with SIFRS Audit Committees' Practical Guidance for Local Authorities and Police 2022. The report also highlights the increase of the Audit Committee co-opted membership from two to three members with effect from the 1st of May 2024, following the recruitment of co-opted independent members to the Audit Committee earlier in the year. In summary, Chairman, whilst the report is largely for information, I would note that I consider the effectiveness of the Audit Committee to be excellent, and council is recommended to note this report and the work undertaken by the Audit Committee during the period September 2023 to August 2024. I am happy to move these recommendations. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Before I invite speakers, are there any questions on the report? Does any member wish to speak on the report? Councillor Rob Crute?
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to thank councillors Watson and Fenwick for keeping a steady hand on the tiller over the past couple of years. The question I've got isn't directly for the Chair of the Audit Committee, it's maybe more for James, the Deputy Monitoring Officer, and it's a one about reporting mechanisms. We know from the report this morning that we get annual or bi-annual reports from the Audit Committee to this full council. I'd like to know what would happen in a position where there were red flags showing up. For example, in this report, we know that the Audit Committee has looked at the Climate Emergency Response Plan, they've also looked at the sufficiency of the children in care strategy. Now, if there were issues there, I would suspect the Chair of that committee would raise them either with the head of service or with CMT. I'd like to know if he could try and strengthen those arrangements by having some mechanism in place where any red flags raised in audit are also referred to the relevant thematic scrutiny committee, in these cases, the Environment Committee or the Children's Committee. Now, I don't know which way that would work. I suspect it would need to go before the Constitution Working Group, and I suspect it would need to go after May, when we may need a different complexion on how those committees stack up. But I'd like to have some guidance from the Deputy Monitoring Officer on how we might be able to do that, because I think it strengthens the reporting mechanism, but also in some way cuts across that divide between audit and regulatory committees on one side and scrutiny on the other. Now, we know neither twin should meet, but I do think there's some value in using the experience from audit and the experience that we have in scrutiny to develop stronger services. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, councillor Crute. I think I would agree with what you say in terms of the regular reports that come through to full council from the Audit Committee. It doesn't preclude the Chair of the Audit Committee from bringing things to full council's attention if there was that sort of red flag incident, as you sort of allude to. On the scrutiny point, again, I would agree with what you've said about that would be something that would need to go through the Constitution Working Group first, where the mechanics of how that might work could be discussed, and then any proposal could be then brought back to full council after consideration by CWG.
Thanks, Chair.
There is no one else wishing to speak. Can I ask the council to receive and note the report? We move on to item nine, review of the council's statement of licensing policy. Can I ask the Corporate Director of Neighbourhood and Climate Change to present the report?
Thank you, Chair, and good morning, council. This report brings the final draft statement of licensing policy for the period 2024 to 2029 to full council for approval. The Licensing Act of 2003 requires local authorities to publish a statement of licensing policy every five years, and as our current policy was published in October 2019, the new policy will be required no later than the end of October 2024. The legislation provides a clear focus on the promotion of four statutory objectives, which must be addressed when licensing functions are undertaken, and these objectives are the prevention of crime and disorder, public safety, the prevention of public nuisance, and the protection of children from harm. Each of these objectives is of equal importance, and these are the only statutory objectives. However, the legislation also supports several other key aims and purposes which remain vitally important in licensing work. These relate to protecting the public and residents from crime and social behaviour and other poor behaviours associated with licensed premises, giving the police and licensing authorities the powers needed to effectively manage the night-time economy, but to also recognise the important role which licensed premises play in our local communities and in the local economy by supporting responsible premises, providing a regulatory framework for alcohol, and encouraging greater community involvement in licensing decisions, and giving residents the opportunity to have their say, and these objectives are also embedded in the policy. An extensive consultation exercise has been carried out and responses have been considered, and where appropriate incorporated into the new draft policy, and the new policy is attached in Appendix Two to the report. There are no significant changes proposed to the new policy, other than minor amendments and the provision of additional guidance, and all of these changes are outlined in paragraphs 21 and 22 of the report in detail. As part of the policy consultation, there was representation from some parties in the city of Durham who raised the issues of a late-night levy and to consider the introduction of a commutative impact policy. Now, these are discretionary tools that licensing authorities can adopt if there's sufficient evidence available to substantiate such measures. There's an evidence gathering process that can be lengthy and which will require significant assistance from a wide range of partners and other council services. These issues can also be considered at any time and are not tied to the policy renewal. The draft statement of licensing policy was considered and endorsed for recommendation to full council by the Statutory Licensing Committee in July 2024, and at that meeting the committee also determined that consideration about the late-night levy and the commutative impact policy should take place at a later date to allow the draft policy to be adopted before the statutory deadline of October. This approach has also been supported by the Police and Crime Commissioners Office, which is a statutory consultancy for the issues raised. Councillor, paragraph 10 sets out the recommendations of this report, which is to adopt the revised statement of licensing policy contained in Appendix Two.
Thank you. Can I have a mover to the report? Councillor Brown?
Thank you, Chair. This statement of licensing policy confirms the council's commitment to promoting the four statutory licensing objectives, namely, to prevent crime and disorder, promote public safety, prevent public nuisance, and protect children from harm. It is vital that the council regularly reviews this policy and has in place a clear and robust framework to assist decision-making and to support effective regulation of licensed premises and activities, to ensure that they are safe and well-run, and continue to support the local economy and vibrancy of the county. As Chair of the Statutory Licensing Committee, I support the intention to undertake further work around the late-night levy and cumulative impact policy for Durham City in the future, so that these measures can be fully and properly considered with the Police and Crime Commissioner. Any future decision will be subject to council approval and can be incorporated into the licensing policy at a later date. I would like to thank the members of the Statutory Licensing Committee for their ongoing dedication to the council in developing this policy and to the council officers involved in undertaking this review. This policy has been developed following existing consultation and reflects current national guidance and best practice. I am therefore happy to move this report and propose this policy for adoption by the council. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Can I have a second to the report? Councillor Shuttlesworth?
Thank you, Chair, good morning. The policy promotes effective and responsible management of licensed premises and regulated activities throughout the county, and has been reviewed having had regard to the statutory guidance, the licensing objectives, and to the views of those who we consulted. I extend my thanks to the members of the Statutory Licensing Committee and officers involved, and I'm happy to second the recommendations that council adopts the policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I invite speakers, are there any questions on the report? Councillor Rob Crute?
Thanks, Chair, just a brief one about the timeline involved in establishing this policy. We know from the report that it's a requirement that it's published by tomorrow, and now in effect that binds our hands to it today. Now, I don't have any specific objections, and I'm not seeking to burn the house down, so don't worry about that. I was just a little bit concerned about how tight we are on the schedule, and so is the reason why this came in so late, could have not been brought a little bit sooner just so it could be debated, and if there were any impact from comments or questions raised by members here, we would have time then to amend it before it came in. Or, on the other hand, does it not really matter that we don't have a statutory policy in place? Because I wouldn't like to think it would have any kind of impact on the operational ability of the council to take forward its role.
Thanks for the question, councillor Crute. You're absolutely right, this is quite late to the statutory deadline. We would not want to be a council that was in breach of its statutory duty to have a licensing policy in place. The process that we did to bring this new policy to council started more than a year ago, and we did the extensive consultation, and as you can see, the policy went to the last committee before the summer break. I think I would take the point that probably bringing this earlier would give council longer time to consider the new elements of the policy. However, I think the important thing is to get it in before the end of this month.
There's no one else registered to ask a question? Does any member wish to speak on the report? Can I ask the council to agree the recommendations in the report? Thank you. We move on to item number 10, motions on notice. We have two motions for today's meeting. Both motions are set out on the agenda and will be displayed on the screen at the relevant time. Please note, there was an error on the agenda, and the second motion will be moved by councillor Hovells and not councillor Miller. Can I ask the Deputy Monitoring Officer to outline the procedure, please?
Thank you, Chair. The usual rules of debate apply, so movers will have five minutes to speak, and other members will have three minutes. Members may only speak once, other than the mover of the motion who will have a right of reply at the end of the debate. If there are any amendments proposed, the debate will move to whether or not that amendment should be adopted as the substantive motion. All councillors may speak again, other than the mover of the original motion, who shall retain the right of reply. Thank you, Chair.
Can I invite councillor Craig Martin to move his motion, please?
Thanks, Chair. Councillor Craig Martin for North Lodge in Chastley Street. Chair, I bring forward this motion, knowing how many of us care about sorting out the horrific issue of child poverty. This policy, the two-child benefit cap, it hasn't worked. All it has done is confined a generation of young people to being entrenched in the difficulties of being in a household struggling to make ends meet. With every year, more and more families get caught up in this. Due to when the policy was originally introduced, those already in multiple children families were exempt from the changes, so by sitting on your hands, in your pockets, the problem just increases. I reference the University of York in the motion, and I will reference a recent publication from the University of Essex, End Child Poverty and Benefit Changes and Larger Family Study, which states, abolishing the two-child limit is the most cost-effective way to reduce child poverty and the most urgent action the government must take to reduce child poverty. It would lift 300,000 children out of poverty and means 700,000 children are in less deep poverty, making a significant difference to the lives of over a million children at a cost of 1.7 billion. It's worth repeating that statement from the independent study, the most cost-effective way to reduce child poverty. So, if you care about ending child poverty, there is no better way to do it than ending the cap. What about the cost? This isn't free, there are difficult choices in government to balance the books, but with power, you do have levers available to pull. So, for example, you could fund this by reinstating the banker's tax, something removed a few years ago that was put in place after the financial crash, a tax that is still in place across Europe, so our banking sector would remain competitive. This is just one way, feel free to choose your own income-raising method. The point I'm trying to make is if you really want to do this, if you really care about children in poverty and you're in government, you can do this. I want to highlight the underlying ethical issue with the two-child benefit cap. The original purpose was to deal with the perceived problem with adults on benefits. The vast majority of people on benefits are not milking the system, they are people in genuine need. I will not deny that there's some people out there taking advantage of the system, but they are few and far between. But this ethos completely ignores the most important thing in this debate, the children. It is not fair to punish a child, subject them to entrenched poverty because of the perceived failings of the parents. The child did not choose to be part of this family. We should be supporting the needs of children, as opposed to punishing the entire family. So, members, back the motion to send a clear message to the government that we need action on this. Equally, I want to make sure the MPs we do have are empowered to vote on issues with their conscience. That would really make a difference to the lives of people in County Durham and the North East. Will there be something in the coming budget that helps tackle this problem? I really do hope so, but let's send a clear message to the government to get this overturned. If you're serious about fixing child poverty, you have to make this change. Members, back the motion.
Thank you. The motion requires a second, councillor John Blakey?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'm happy to second this motion today, but will point out that all families receiving benefits during this financial crisis do need help. The reinstatement for all children to receive the benefit would help families within our county and across the country. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Does any member wish to speak on the motion? Councillor Angela Sirtis?
Thank you, Chair. Chair, I'd like to move an amendment to the motion, if that's okay? Thank you. Wow, councillor Martin, amazing. I acknowledge the sentiment of the motion, however, I find that this motion that you're putting before us today is a little bit laughable, not the child poverty element, the motion that you're putting towards us. In 2016, when the Lib Dem Tory government introduced the Welfare Reform and Work Bill and repealed the Child Poverty Act of 2010, which had a full action plan with targets to reduce child poverty to below 10%, then brought about 14 years of austerity, where were you? Where were you in 2015, when the two-child limit was first put on the table for discussions? And where again, in 2017, when it was passed? And now you sit here with the audacity to demand we write to government about this policy? Laughable. You and your partner are to blame. From 2010, the Condemned Government introduced these new measures, and as a result, you have supported an increase in child poverty by over 13% across the country in the last 14 years, and that's across the board. And 69% of those children actually live in working households, and this is across a vast number of changes and cuts and changes to benefits and welfare, and all introduced as a mechanism within the Welfare Reform Act. This motion only tackles a small amount of families in poverty and only tackles one cause of poverty. In fact, the motion is actually plagiarised from the young Lib Dems from your conference, and your motion completely misses the point of child poverty entirely and its determining causes. I heard on the telly the other week that our actual leader of Durham County Council told the country or the county that Labour were responsible for child poverty, and where have you been for the last 14 years? Child poverty was down to almost 16% in 2009, and now it's up to 30%. Child poverty isn't something new, it's something that has been around for years, historically going up through Tory governments and then coming down with Labour governments, and it was at its all-time lowest until 1980. Well, we have been dealt the cards that the Tory government have left us, enabled by the Liberal Democrats, and discovered that there is now a £40 billion black hole that needs to be plugged, a bit like what the coalition here has done to Durham. I haven't read anywhere that the current government are committed to keeping the cap. In fact, what they have said is that a child poverty task force is to be set up to look at child poverty across the country. Your motion asks us to write to the government to scrap the two-child limit. Well, I say if we are going to write to the government, let's do it about all levels of child poverty. Let's look at child poverty in its entirety and in all of its causes. And I hope that all members across the chamber do get behind a more positive and productive motion here that will support all the residents and communities of County Durham, regionally and nationally as well. We have a regional child poverty unit that's been set up in NECA. We have a national poverty unit that's been set up by the new government. So I would like to move the following amendment, that we do believe that the child limit, the two-child limit to benefit payments was cruel and has dragged people, but also that council welcomes the stance of the government in reviewing child poverty and all of its determinants through the formation of the Child Poverty Strategy Plan and ministerial task force. So I call upon the portfolio holder for equalities and inclusion to write to the Minister for Education and the Minister for Department of Work and Pensions, and ask how Durham County Council can help and support the delivery of the new Child Poverty Strategy Plan, which will create a new ministerial task force to drive across cross-government action on child poverty. And I further request that the portfolio holder writes to the mayor, who has already launched a child poverty unit, and ask how Durham County Council can get involved with a NECA child poverty unit as well. Thank you, Chair.
Can I have a second to the amendment?
Thank you, Chair. I would like to second the amendment moved by councillor Sirtis, and in doing so, I would like to start to say that I'm relieved to hear that councillor Martin has finally gotten his voice back. For anyone that's counting, it's taken 2,733 days for councillor Martin to submit his motion in opposition to the two-child benefit cap. That's the equivalent of 55 and a half Liz Truss governments, or 248 lifespans of a refrigerated lettuce, according to a quick Google search. It also happens to be the exact amount of time he's been elected councillor, and the same amount of time that the two-child benefit cap has actually been in place. Unfortunately, over this time, child poverty has continued to increase, and it's now estimated to be 4.2 million children across the UK. I cannot help but wonder what might have changed in the last 112 days that has finally given him the confidence to speak out on this issue. We've heard many examples of councillor Martin's creative writing skills over the years. I seem to remember not too long ago, he single-handedly saved free-after-2pm parking in Chastler Street, and you've all heard this morning just how successful he was in that particular endeavour. I'm supporting this amendment because the original motion is flawed. Those that would benefit most from the removal of the two-child benefit cap would instead be hit by the overall benefits cap that was introduced by the coalition government in 2013, something that this motion doesn't even reference. A cynical mind might go so far as to suggest that this motion was not motivated at all by concern about child poverty, but simply to score political points. It's like living in a strange dystopian world where liberal democrats are appointed to cabinet in order to secure votes for Tory policies. Apparently, it caught on, as we've long since passed the stage in here anyway, where I can tell which members of the cabinet here are Tories and which ones are not. Child poverty is a colossal issue, and we need a government... Child poverty is a colossal issue and we need a government that recognises the scale of the challenge ahead after the last 14 years of chaos and failure. Councillor Martin may not like it, but that's exactly what the Labour government are doing. Despite the best efforts of the Liberal Democrats, it's Labour that's winning here, Labour that's running Whitehall and Labour that's already working to turn this country around.
One minute councillor.
I second the motion Chair, because we need a clear strategy to address this over the longer term, and because as a council, we should be working with Kim McGinnis, the Labour mayor, and the Labour government to deliver the change that 4.2 million children desperately need. Thank you.
councillor Curtis Bahari.
Thank you Chair. Please councillor Martin mentions a conscience. At the last council meeting, we found out the Lib Dems had a conscience when it came to pensioners, now it seems they've found one for our children in poverty. The two-child benefit cap was introduced in 2017, they gained control of this council in 2021, that means three and a half years to call for this to be scrapped, or as my colleague states, 55 Liz Trusses. Did they do it? No, they didn't. Why might that be Chair? Is it because the Lib Dems are sharing power with the very party that introduced this in the first place? And I might add Chair, that the Conservatives will be very quiet on this issue, I'm assuming they'll vote in favour, which means that they're now all advocates for scrapping a policy they introduced, another party that seems to have found a conscience. And this is all sort of bringing back memories of the National Coalition, Lib Dems side by side with the Tories, the architects of austerity, and austerity that left 25% of children in County Durham living in poverty. And as someone who grew up in one of the most deprived towns in the county, to sit here and listen to members opposite try to lecture me on tackling child poverty is nothing short of offensive. Your parties are the ones responsible for this. And I think the reason I'm on this side of the chamber is because the previous Labour government lifted a million children out of poverty, working tax credits, shoe start and record child benefit. And I'm sure that the new Labour government will do exactly the same with free breakfast clubs, cutting uniform costs and young future hubs. But all of this distracts us from the real issue. The members opposite run this council. If they want to tackle child poverty, why not take a lead, work with the government and the North East Mayor, or better yet, why don't they provide a package of financial support? But we know they can't do that, because they've run this council's finances into the ground. So I would ask that instead of playing politics and blaming a government of three months, let's see some leadership and responsibility for once from this council, and they can start by supporting our amendment. Thank you Chair.
councillor Alan Shield.
Thank you Chair. Can I just bring to members' attention that in 2021, we Durham County Council joined the North East Child Poverty Commission, which had never been attended to by any members of Durham County Council previous. I have been active with other members, but particularly other officers, in formulating policies to address this particular issue.
Point of order Chair. He's making an assumption. I attended the North East Child Poverty Commission for over two years prior to 2021. Thanks Chair.
The last policy, which I recommend that you read, was No Time to Wait. It was a blueprint for tackling child poverty in the North East, and it referred to the Joseph Roundtree Foundation submitting on policy issues, and that removing the two-child poverty cap would be the single biggest contributor addressing child poverty in the North East, which was supported by the patron of the North East Child Poverty Commission, the former Bishop of Durham, the Right Reverend Paul Butler, who in his final address in the House of Lords urged everyone to support that policy. There are specific issues of unfairness, lots have been raised. For instance, the blending or merging of two families with two or more children per family. Durham County Council actually hosted a Child Poverty Commission at County Hall in September 2022, and we had a second hosting scheduled for October 16th, at which the mayor, Kim McGinnis, was requested to attend as a keynote speaker. That unfortunately had to be declared.
One minute councillor.
That she wasn't able to do that, so we've rescheduled this for the 21st of November. Surprisingly, she's actually established her own Child Reduction Summit on November 18th. I have written to the chief executive of the North East Child Poverty Commission, ensuring that we have clarity of reference, that we have no duplication, but we have complementation of processes and policy. Just to mention one quick question also that was raised by the mover, we do have some issues of feckless parenting, I think that needs to be clarified. And in my role in benefits, I had to advise people that having additional children does not automatically include the opportunity of increasing household income. So I do believe that these issues are of a minority basis and the majority of parents...
Point of order Chair. Can you... Point of order Chair. He's saying that I've made reference to something...
No, I didn't say that Chair.
He said the mover of the amendment made reference to something about feckless parenting. You need to take that back, because I never said that.
No, the mover...
Councillor Shield.
Sorry, the mover of the motion...
We talked about the amendment surely?
The mover of the motion made reference to the fact that people, some individuals, would have children for the benefit of financial gain. I'm trying to clarify that sort of case.
Councillors, it isn't a valid point of order.
Chair, at this point, I would just like to give council its 15-minute warning. We've 15 minutes of the 30 minutes have elapsed in relation to motions, so under rule 10.7, 10.7b, and I have to give a 15-minute warning for motions. This will be the cutoff in relation to this motion, no further registrations to speak will be accepted. There are five speakers remaining. If all five speakers used all three minutes they were allotted, that would take us to the time for motions, we wouldn't get on to the second motion on the agenda. And finally, we will call the remaining councillors who have registered to speak in order.
Thank you Chair.
Is it a point of order?
Oh sorry, I was wanting to speak on the amendment. Okay. The handset is broken.
You're not reched to speak.
Okay.
councillor Rob Crute.
Thank you Chair, speaking in support of the amendment, and I would urge other members to support the amendment if they're serious about tackling child poverty, because if you're going to do that, you've got to do it in the round, rather than just select certain elements of it out of political convenience. But if we get, if we give the justice, the debate any justice this morning, I think we need to understand the real motives, why this motion's being put in front of us this morning. So through you Chair, I'd like to raise a couple of points with the proposal of the motion, because this policy's been in place since 2017. So why has it taken seven whole years for councillor Martin to raise this as an issue? Now, when did councillor Martin actually come to the conclusion that this policy was cruel and harmful, as he calls it? And why has he sat on his hands and his conscience for the last seven years? What's changed since 2017 to prompt this sudden outburst of moral outrage from councillor Martin? To me Chair, this looks like nothing but expediency and opportunism, but I do think councillor Martin has the right to defend his motion, but I think he has the right to explain the motives behind bringing this motion forward now, when he's had an opportunity over the last seven years. And I'd appreciate a direct response from Craig Martin, because I think it's important that we understand the motives behind this. We have the real motives in bringing the amendment forward, because we want to do something about child poverty, we're not being political about this. This to me speaks of, this to me speaks of nothing but negative political opportunism without putting anything of value on the table, so I'd expect a full response and a frank response from councillor Martin Chair.
councillor Martin will have his opportunity to make his reply at the end. councillor Amanda Hobgood.
Yeah, thanks. I think I'm actually a bit flabbergasted for once at some of the things I've heard. I've just heard from councillor Crute there about not politicising, I've never heard more two political speeches than the mover and the seconded of this motion, who can't even get the facts right. In 2016, the Liberal Democrats were not in government, there was an election in 2015. So I think we need to get some facts there. And pardon?
Just to say, that's not actually what the mover of the amendment said.
Yes, it is what the mover said.
The start of the sentence was about 2017, she was asking where he was in 2016.
Councillor, that's not a point of order.
Right. She did say in 2016, when the Liberal Democrats were in government. I then sit and hear about how wonderful the combined authority is, the combined authority that we are a part of because of the people on this side of the chamber. The person who sits on the cabinet of the combined authority is me, as leader of this council, and I sit and partake in the conversations and I'm actively involved in everything that you have put in your amendment. Would we be there if you'd been leading this council? Absolutely not. We talk, we hear about leadership, that is almost laughable. The leader of the opposition in this chamber actively campaigned to keep County Durham out of the North East Combined Authority. He actively spoke to every single leader in the North East to said, keep Durham out, do everything you can to vote against Durham. And where is the illustrious leader this morning? For the second time in a row, he has chosen party over county, again with leadership. So this morning, myself, councillor Bell and councillor Shield have drove back from Harrogate, and we will be going back as soon as this meeting's finished, to continue at the Local Government Association Conference, where we have meetings again this afternoon. Councillor Marshall and councillor Shaw couldn't bring themselves to come back. He couldn't bring himself to come back from Labour Party Conference a day earlier, like I did from my party conference.
One minute councillor.
To make sure that I was here in a true leadership role to represent the people of County Durham. So don't come here and criticise us and speak about leadership when you don't have the first clue.
councillor Alwyn Gunn.
Thank you, thank you Chair. Can I, first of all, just say that I'm hugely disappointed in the leader of this county council with this current attack on the leader of the Labour group. I mean frankly, it does you no good whatsoever. And I find it quite shameful that you chose a time to actually do that in this debate.
Councillor, two seconds.
I know that this is about the amendment, and therefore...
councillor, two seconds. Can we please have everyone quiet so we can hear what councillor Gunn is saying? Thank you.
Much has been said already about this amendment and why we've put this amendment, and a lot has been said about what are blatant political point-scoring issues from councillor Martin. I think that if councillor Martin's talk about conscience is absolutely real, then his conscience has actually come a little late, in fact a lot late. It's been so delayed that I'm absolutely shocked at him ringing this motion to this council at this time. And I want to respond to councillor Alan Shield, who appears to want to talk about and talk up the coalition and his role in the North East Child Poverty Commission, as though it never happened under the Labour administration. It did. It did happen, absolutely did happen. And councillor Sirtes quite rightly got up to say that she had attended the Child Poverty Commission, and I can tell you as well, that when I had the Portfolio for Children's Services, I was chair of the North East Regional Children's Portfolio Holders Committee, and I worked with the chief executive of the Child Poverty Commission. So please do not lecture us, Chair, through you Chair, please do not lecture us about our involvement in all of the things that you did, and the implication is that we didn't. We did those. Chair, I find this an absolutely incredible motion, and I fully support this amendment. Of course, we want to work to ensure that there is no child poverty in this county. And I think councillor Martin, his time would have been better spent talking to the leader of this council about her work with the North East Mayor, and I think that would have been a much better time spent than actually bringing a motion like this at this time, simply out of blatant politicking in this chamber. Thank you Chair. Chair, can we have a named vote?
Yeah, a request for a named vote will require 10 members. Thank you members, a named vote on the amendment will take place at the end of the debate.
councillor Mark Wilkes.
It would seem councillor Sirtes would rather have a task force here and a policy unit there and as many other Labour Party gimmicks as they can come up with, instead of actually dealing with issues head-on. And what do we have from councillor Wood? Jokes about lettuces and personal insults when we're talking about child poverty? It makes no sense to me. The Institute for Public Policy Research has calculated that scrapping this policy wouldn't just lift huge numbers of children out of poverty, it actually increased GDP by 0.5% and boosted the economy by £14 billion. The Women's Budget Group have calculated that hundreds of thousands of children will be lifted out of poverty by scrapping the cap, and that it would save twice as much in future costs on society as it would removing the policy. Even Conservative commentators and think tanks like Onwards, I don't know who they are, but that's what it says, are suggesting that the policy needs to be reversed because it's flawed. And to be clear, who does it hit the hardest? Children. In single-parent families, low-income families, huge numbers of parents working. Councillor Bahari, as a council, we've recently changed our policy so that all children are automatically enrolled for school meals. We've seen today it's benefiting over 1,700 children, two and a half thousand children, 1,700 families. We're supporting low-income families with one of the only full council tax reduction schemes in the region. I'm presuming that you support these kind of things that we are doing, because you voted for them in previous meetings. The amendment from Labour is completely unacceptable. Quite frankly, I think the tone from certain members opposite is also unacceptable. I don't really see any legitimate reasons for anyone not supporting the scrapping of the two-child cap. And if anyone's playing politics here, to be honest, I think it's the Labour members opposite, who seem today to be more interested in insulting people than a simple request of their government.
One minute councillor.
To scrap a policy which I'm sure none of them actually agree with. So please vote against the amendment, which doesn't really do anything, and for the substantive motion. Thank you Chair.
Sorry, the 30 minutes time limit has expired. councillor Martin may now exercise his right of reply.
Thank you Chair. I'll just remind the council that the Liberal Democrats didn't do this in the coalition years. This policy wasn't palatable to us, despite it being a longstanding ambition of the Conservatives. But who is content with this cruel policy, the two-child benefit cap? The Labour Party are, and they're extremely happy with subjecting young people to poverty by allowing it to happen, to the point where they will punish their own MPs who want to help those in desperate need. Chair, the story of the good Samaritan would be a completely different story if it was the good Starmer. As the story goes, the injured person... As the story goes, the injured person lying there, the priest crosses the road, the levite crosses the road. Keir Starmer comes, I can help you, I know how I can do it. But instead, I'm going to form a task group to talk about how I can help you. I believe those in positions of political leadership are complicit if they don't even attempt to take any clear direct action to fix a problem with the resources they have at their disposal. In this story, I believe the priest is complicit, the levite is complicit. Keir Starmer and the Labour Party are complicit in allowing children to suffer when this is the most financially sensible way to do something immediately, as put out by the independent studies. So I'll answer that question. What has changed or moved this motion today? Well, the big thing is we've got a Labour government that's meant to have a social conscious, the opportunity for significant social change, particularly for someone like myself, who did have a couple of difficulties with some of the decisions that were made during the coalition years. Why wouldn't I have put this forward when the Conservatives were in power? Because they believe in this policy. So it would be very unusual for me to send a letter to a Conservative minister who would read it. They'd bin it very quickly. And as opposed to appealing to somebody that, you know, a Labour minister, who generally wants to try and fix child poverty by taking direct action. Members, I call on you to reject this amendment.
One minute, councillor.
Thank you. Reject the amendment because it dilutes the motion as a whole. I came here to talk about the two child benefit cap. If we want to talk about child poverty in its full rounds, put your own motion forward. In fact, we could probably have days of discussion and debate on some of the complexity around pulling people and particularly children out of poverty. The point of the motion is the two child benefit cap. Reject the amendment and then have a vote on whether you're for or against it, please.
Thank you, councillor. I'd like to bring the deputy monitoring officer.
Thank you, Chair. We will now take the vote on the amendment as proposed by councillor Sirtis. The voting will take place in the usual way on your voting handsets. It will be one to vote in favour of the amendment by councillor Sirtis, two to be against the amendment, or three to abstain. As ever, if you press the wrong button, pressing the right button will correct it. If you have any problems with your voting handsets, please stick your hand up in the air as quickly as possible and somebody from committee services will be able to assist. And I will let you know when the voting is open. Well, and apologies, members, as requested by councillor Gunn, this will be a recorded vote. So the way each member votes will appear in the minutes, which will be available after the meeting and they will be shown on the screen as well. Thank you, Chair. And the vote is open. We'll close the vote now.
Councillors. Councillors. For the motion 49, against the motion 47, abstentions to, the amendment is carried.
Chair, just while we flick through the names for the named vote, now that the amendment's been carried, that becomes the substantive motion. Once we flick through the names, councillor Sirtis will be entitled to a right of reply. And then we will take a further vote on the substantive motion as just amended by council.
councillor Sirtis.
Thank you, Chair. I see this motion as an opportunity for Durham County Council to put their money where their mouth is from the coalition and step behind what we've got in terms of an opportunity here to work with NECA and their child poverty unit and also the government with their new child poverty strategy plan and ministerial task force. The key element of this task force down in government is cross party. And I believe that we all have the same agenda here, which is child poverty, of which the two child benefit limit is part of it, along with the benefit cap and along with all of the other benefits. So what I would welcome is is that everybody supports this amendment and gets behind what we are trying to do and lead by what we have always done in the past. And that's supporting our people, supporting our communities and being an exemplar for the whole of the country. And what I would like to do here is I would also like to ask for a named vote, please, on this amendment. Thank you. Or the substantive motion, should I say now. Thank you very much.
Do we have 10 in favour? Yeah, okay. So Chair will now take a vote on the substantive motion as amended. Again, this will be a named vote, so the way in which members vote will be visible in the minutes and will be shown on screen again. So it's one to vote in favour of the motion as amended, two to vote against the motion as amended, and three to abstain. And I will let you know when the vote is open and then closed. The vote is open. We'll close the vote.
Thank you, councillors. For the motion 86, against nine, three abstentions, the motion is carried. Councillors, we have used up the allocated time for motions. So unfortunately councillor Hovell's motion will be carried to the next meeting. We move on to item 11. Questions from members. Members, we have received one question for today's meeting, which has been submitted jointly by councillors Eric and Lesley Maven. The subject matter is very important, but also very sad, which some people may find this upsetting. The question will be displayed on the screen. Can I invite councillor Lesley Maven, Belmont Division? Suicide is the biggest killer of all people under the age of 35 and three quarters of these are male. The North East has the highest rate of suicide in England. Three months ago, our 19 year old nephew took his own life. The three dads walking came together after their daughters took their own lives and have walked hundreds of miles over the last year across the UK to raise awareness of suicide and to ensure the topic is spoken about in schools in a safe and age appropriate way. Can we ask the Cabinet Member for Children and Young People and the Cabinet Member for Adult and Health Services to write to the Secretary of State for Education to request that she ensures suicide awareness and prevention is a compulsory part of the RHSE curriculum? To raise the profile and reduce the stigma of suicide? People don't die from talking about suicide. They die because we don't talk about it. Thank you. Colleagues, I am sure you will all unite with me passing on our condolences to this young man's family and friends in these very tragic circumstances. I would not usually allow any further speeches or discussions in relation to questions from members. However, I felt it appropriate to allow councillor Eric Maven to say a few words.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Eric Maven, Belmont Division. Both Lesley and I wish we weren't here today putting this question forward in full council. However, here we are. Our nephew Sandy was a lovely young lad who was caring, loving, thoughtful, talented and funny. He had the world at his feet and a bright future to look forward to. He was only 19 years old. We cannot comprehend what was going through his head when he decided to take his own life and we will never know. I just wish he had stopped for a moment and thought of the devastation he was going to lay behind and the pain it would cause to so many people. This pain is never going away. I just wish he had spoken to somebody and shared his burden, then we might not have been here today. Thank you.
councillor Keith, can I ask, is... Is it a point of order?
No, 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 it's not. I just wanted to offer my condolences to councillors, to councillors and members because I, in 2021, I think it was, I got diagnosed with type 2 bipolar disorder. And before that, before that happened, my wife found out that I was intending to take my own life. Don't need to go into how I was going to do that, but it's a well known way that you do it. I was saved by the crisis team at the Goodall Centre in Bishop Auckland. The key thing is, once I'd been pulled away from what they called the crisis team, that's people who are probably on the verge of actually doing it, I got help. And the help was very important. And talking is the best medicine, absolutely 100%. When you talk about something, when you think it, it sounds horrible and huge. When you tell someone about it, it gets a lot smaller and it just doesn't own you. And I can't, I can't, enough of my condolences and another teenager, another day. We've got to get away from this. We've got to start talking. And I congratulate you both, if that's the right term, I'm sure. I thank you both for bringing this into the public sphere. So I hope that was appropriate, Chair. I have a large gob and I use it now, I think, to a good purpose. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Sometimes the rules are there to break. Can I invite councillor Chris Hood, Cabinet Portfolio Holder of Adult Health and Services, to respond to the question?
Thank you, Chair. And firstly, may I give my sincere condolences to both Eric and Lesley? My thoughts are of course with you both as you mourn the loss of your family member. As you rightly say at the end of your question, people don't die from talking about suicide. They die because we don't talk about it. I thank you both for your courage in bringing this question to full council. Despite the work of partners across the system, County Durham continues to experience one of the highest rates of suicide in the country. And behind the statistics, each individual is a tragic loss of life with a profound impact on all those left behind. Good mental health, wellbeing and resilience are key protective factors to support suicide prevention. This area is one of the four priorities for the Health and Wellbeing Board identified in our joint local health and wellbeing strategy, which was published last year. While suicide in children is thankfully rare, every case is one too many. And we also know that promotion of effective resilience mechanisms and positive mental wellbeing at a young age provides a sound foundation as children move to adulthood. It is therefore vital that young people receive appropriate information, guidance and, where needed, individual support. Teaching about mental health and emotional wellbeing is a requirement as part of statutory health education to, I quote, enable peoples to make good decisions about their own health and wellbeing, to understand the links between physical and mental health, to recognise problems in themselves or others and to seek support when needed, end quote. Within County Durham, we promote a tailored whole school approach around the mental wellbeing of children and young people based on self assessed need. Over 75% of schools in County Durham thankfully now have a senior mental health lead as part of their senior leadership teams. A range of interventions are available to schools, including youth aware mental health, the Durham Resilience Programme, anxious about schools and critical incidents, loss and bereavement. Every school has a resilience nurse provision, which includes delivering a number of group and one to one sessions within schools for low level mental health. Schools also have access to the educational psychologist teams and school counselling service. In addition, schools are encouraged to sign up to Ripple, which identifies young people who search for methods of suicide using school computers, signposting them to help and support that is available. Support to upskilled school staff is also in place through the implementation of the Relationship Sex Health and Education Quality Framework, a whole school approach to delivering RSHE, alongside measures such as peer mentor and emotional health and wellbeing forums. Between May 2024 and July 2024, the Department for Education held a public consultation on the proposed changes to the Statutory Relationship Sex Health and Education Guidance. The consultation sought the views on how sensitive and complex subjects were taught in an age appropriate way and proposed the addition of new subjects to the curriculum, including suicide prevention. The outcome of this consultation and subsequent revised guidance for education settings has not yet been published. As the mental health and wellbeing of children and young people is of great importance to us all, I can confirm that I will write to the Secretary of State requesting a further update on the outcome. on the outcomes of the consultation and urge her to ensure that suicide prevention is added to the statutory curriculum as an outcome of the review. Thank you again. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Maven, you do have the opportunity to ask a supplementary question?
No, I don't have one to ask, thank you.
Thank you. That concludes today's business for the council meeting. I would like to thank everyone for taking part and to those members of the public and media who have watched this meeting. Thank you.